On this variety of issues that have come before the commission. So, thank you for being here. We've got a lot of speakers cards on a variety of issues, but we are going to start with issues related to Commissioner Portun. This was to be Commissioner Portun's last meeting about an hour ago. About an hour ago, we learned he's not going to make it. Hold on one second, one second. All right, so, he was getting ready to come. He has a fever, that he realized he had a fever and he's not going to make it. So, I know many of you are here to thank him for his service and celebrate his career. I can't tell you how devastated he is that he can't be here. But we're going to move forward because we're going to videotape, and when we videotape all our meetings anyway, and we're going to go over with a piece of his cake and with the video and watch it with Todd. So if you did intend to speak, even though Todd's not here, please come forward. We'll give you a couple of minutes to say whatever you'd like to say. I know that Todd would appreciate it, and again, thank you for being here. So, we're going to start with an unveiling. So, we have a little something behind me. Commissioner Dumas and I, in fact, we've got to officially do this, but I'm going to, why don't we do that first? There is a resolution in front of us, and so, as you know...
I would think that's starting with the appropriate prior minutes.
Oh, for heaven's sakes. Oh, the attorney's in the room. All right, so, and I didn't do the intros either. So, Leslie Hervey, Jackie Pianiotto, Vice President Summero Dumas, County Administrator Jeff Aluto, and our legal counsel, Michael Friedman. Thank you, Michael, for keeping us in line. And I tell you what, let's start with Asylum Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you can. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I did get ahead of myself. All right, so we have a presentation for Commissioner Portun, and so we will start, I am going to just start it off officially by offering a resolution recognizing Hamilton County Commissioner Todd Portun upon his retirement and naming, well, this is the naming part, so maybe I will get up, naming this building, the county administration building, the Todd B. Portun Center for County Government in his honor. Yes. Thank you, Bridget, for getting that together for us. So, I've made a motion to approve of the resolution.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so, let's get to the speakers cards. So, I've got a number of them. You had the, oh, and, so the Vice Mayor has joined.
Former Vice.
Former Vice Mayor, my bad. You're the Finance Chair now. So David Mann has joined us, and he also has a presentation. So David, would you please come forward?
Absolutely.
Yes. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Well, good evening. I appreciate the chance to be here and present a, yet another tribute to the service of Todd Portun. And it's not a building, but it's, is consistent with the building. Todd and I have interconnected many ways. When I had the privilege of being elected to Congress in the Dark Ages in 1992, Todd was appointed to my seat at City Council. And as you know, he had a record, has had a record of public service unbroken, which is impressive and something that I am very envious of to this day. And then, a few weeks ago, OKI gave him a very distinguished award, the Henry Mann Award, which happens to mean a lot to me because it was an award that OKI developed in partial tribute to my dad, Henry Mann, who was on the Executive Committee of OKI for some 25 years. And it's an award that's only given occasionally, they don't give it every year. So, it meant a lot to me, and I've told Todd this when he was given that award. So, what I have tonight is the first sign that will be coming to redesignate secondarily, we call it a secondary renaming of Court Street between Walnut and Main as Todd Portun Way.
This is to be delivered to Todd and we'll make some more to put on the street.
We'll do. So you can go down Todd Portun Way and get to the Todd Portun Center for County Government. Thank you for being here, David, and thank you to the city for doing that. Okay. I'm going to call these in the order that I received them. Our first speaker is Caleb Fox.
Thank you very much for an opportunity to speak tonight. If you don't mind, I'm going to speak directly to Todd, even though he's not here. It saddens me greatly that he's not. I was not able to make it to his commemorative event at Memorial Hall. We had a committee meeting that night. So I came tonight specifically because I just wanted to say a word about him. A lot of people have a lot of things to say about Todd, but for me, he personifies the notion of public service. And more than any other elected official or politician that I've encountered in my many years of involvement, he, more than anybody, had the respect of everybody across the board, even those people who he disagreed about, disagreed with on policy matters or political matters. They knew that he approached everything he did with thoughtfulness and hard work, and there aren't many like him. So it's incumbent on all of us to carry on the legacy he's left. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Our next speaker is Andy Pappas, trustee out in Anderson Township. And we've got all three trustees here this evening.
Rare event, I guess.
And if you would please introduce the group.
Yes, with me are my fellow trustees Josh Girth and Dee Stone, and we moved our meeting tonight so we could be here for your meeting. And we are speaking to Todd, and we just wanted to come up here as a Board of Trustees and express our sincere and utter appreciation for Todd's years of service. And Caleb and I don't usually agree on much, but he's right when he says that Todd had a way, you could disagree with him, but you still got along with him. And he had a unique quality of just being so genuine and such a genuine nice guy, and we just truly appreciate, I especially got to know him pretty well, and just appreciate everything that he did and what a good person he was, and we wish him nothing but the best. And he will be, he will be missed here. So we just wanted to say Godspeed and thank you, and we really appreciate you and everything you did. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. For those of you that don't know, Andy Pappas ran against Todd in the last campaign. So to say that you got to know one another is an understatement. Our next speakers are Diana Mayrose and Alice Pavy. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. We wanted to say to Todd, Todd, thank you for all that you've done, for all the people with disabilities in Hamilton County. You've always been there to support us and to be our champion when we needed you the most. You've always been very fair with us and honest, and we really do appreciate that.
I feel Todd's presence in the room this evening, and I just want to say that the first time I met him was very honorable. He's very respectful, very caring, very dedicated. And the best part about Todd is he would say, "I don't know that answer, but I'll find out." And that's what we need in today's society. And he was very dedicated to downtown, loving the events, and being there in many different ways, for his daughter, for his family, for his friends, for those who are government leaders around Hamilton County and Cincinnati, Ohio. Thank you, Todd, so very much for all the work you have done. He worked with me in his very room and signed, and signed resolution for using a universal sign instead of the old handicap. So I know that he means, he is a very meaningful, dedicated person who has love for many in different, in different ways that he can contribute to the community. So thank you, Todd.
Todd, we love you and we'll miss you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eleonora Fusco. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice shirt.
Yes. So, Dear Todd, thank you. Thank you for what you've done. You made the county a better place for all, especially considering the undertow. Thank you for how you've done it. Safe parents. You are here to many, definitely do to me. Sorry. I am here to promise you that I will do my part to make sure that your legacy carries on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Quarry.
Mark Quarry, Cincinnati Area Board of Realtors. I'm here with our current president at Cincinnati Area Board of Realtors, Michelle Billings, and also our president-elect Kelly Meyer. And Michelle, we'll start off real quick.
We would like to thank Commissioner Todd Portun for being a Realtor Champion to the Realtors. We realize that we could not do the work that we do in our communities and in the county without representatives as Todd.
That was real quick.
I start off quick, I'm going to end quick.
You can hold that real quick. It's probably a good thing that Todd isn't here in a way, because I probably would end up being just like you were when you started the meeting. But the Realtor Champion Award that we're going to be presenting to Todd tonight is definitely for somebody who has been on the side of certainly Realtors, that's who our organization serves, but we also serve the public, property owners. And there's been no elected official that has done more in that way over the years than Commissioner Portun, certainly as Commissioner and even back during his days on Cincinnati City Council. He has worked with Realtors throughout this region, and Bob Lane is one of our Realtors who unfortunately passed a few years ago, and Bob and Todd were very dear friends. And Todd always tried to put forward a program that David Crowley had been trying to put in place, and Todd was relentless in that effort as well. You know, and just thinking about Todd too, I just kept on thinking about the wonderful quote from that croagety old man, Winston Churchill. But, you know, it sums up Todd so well, "Never give in. Never, 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 never. In nothing, great or small, large or petty, never give in except to convictions of honor and good sense." And when I was looking at that, I just thought, boy, that's a great way to sum up Todd, certainly his professional service that so many have said already tonight. But Todd is a friend. I will always remember our hours of conversation, talking about certainly politics and issues, but life. He's a believer, and he showed a lot of grace. I saw it firsthand, many times, showed a lot of grace to people who didn't necessarily show a lot of grace to him. But he truly lived that out and turned his cheek and showed them a lot of grace. Your service, Todd, is such an inspiration, and we thank you for it. Most of all, I thank you for your friendship, and I love you. So, do, if that's okay with you?
Yeah.
Give this to you, so we won't go through all of this, but it is a proclamation from Cincinnati Area Board of Realtors, signed by our president and president-elect. It's got all the wear-ass clauses that'll put you to sleep, we won't redone. And then this is a plaque, not like Todd needs another plaque, I guess, but he deserves. So this is our Realtor Champion Award, which we give to Todd, and we give to Todd with great, great love, great admiration, and a great sense of appreciation for his service to us, but all of us here in the region. So, I think that's about it.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Brian Gary.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, speaking on behalf of myself and Maslow's Army, as you know, we have named our bus after the Commissioner. The Commissioner purchased the bus with his own funds, and it's called the Portun Express. Maslow's Army is eternally grateful for the Commissioner who has championed our cause for the homeless in many different ways, specifically giving us a home to have when we were homeless, when we were removed from the Fountain Square and we had nowhere to go, and the Commissioner stepped up and provided the plaza for the Justice Center, the Justice Center Plaza for us to serve out of every Sunday for the last 165 Sundays that we've been serving. And Todd was the very, very first elected official that ever supported me, and I know that he had to go out on a limb at that time because I wasn't accepted, and I'm grateful for that. Todd is the strongest, smartest individual. He's been my mentor, and I've grown to love him very, very much, and I would not be who I am or where I am without his support. We once had a difference of opinion about a particular issue, and it was a very public issue, and I had to make a decision where I was going to come down on it. And I met with Todd, and I said, you know, I don't think I can do this, I don't think I can support this issue. And he said, you know, when I am going through that and struggling with an issue, I have to go with my gut. And he said, you go with your gut, and if anybody has a problem with that, you tell them to come to me. And this was an issue that he was championing, and that's the kind of man he is. That's the kind of man you are, Todd, and I love you more than my next breath. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So, thank you all for being here again. We will make sure that Todd gets the video and the plaque and the other things. So thank you so much for this. Last meeting is emotional, Todd is very emotional about this, and if he were here, I know he would convey how much he loves this county, he loves the people that he has served, and it has been his honor and privilege to serve. I know he would say that. I talked to him about an hour ago, and he's, he was just so privileged to serve this county. So, anyway, thank you all for being here, and we will move on now to the rest of the agenda. You are welcome to stay if you'd like, but please don't feel obligated to stay if you choose not to. The next item is public comments, and we've got a, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, my bad. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. Since we're on, we're talking about Todd and he's watching, I have a few words that I...
Apologize.
That's okay. I like to submit this into the record. I just wrote a few words for you, Todd. It says, Todd Portun, a man of purpose. What is a person of purpose? A person of purpose is a person who is intentional. A person that is intentional sets out to fulfill their passion. A person with passion wakes up looking forward to making an impact in each new day, no matter how big or small, just making sure that someone is better for what you have done. Some of us never realize their purpose. The Scriptures say in Romans 8:28, it tells us. And we know all things God works for the good of those who loves Him, who have been called according to His purpose. Todd, you were called, and you answered, and you are fulfilling your purpose. I love you, Todd.
Thank you. Yes, and, yeah, actually, we have a statement from Joe Dieter's too.
Yes, prosecutors couldn't make it tonight, but he asked that I read the following statement, I think camera one there, to Commissioner Portun. "I want to thank Commissioner Portun for his decades of hard work on behalf of our community. I have known Todd since UC Law School, and even though we have disagreed on particular issues, I never doubted his commitment to Hamilton County. I wish him all the best, and even though he will no longer be a Commissioner, I am confident he will continue working for all of us here in Hamilton County. And personally, Todd, and I know you're watching, I would like to thank Commissioner Portun, especially in my younger years here. He was always treating me professionally and with respect, and Todd, I wish you the best as you continue your fight." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Madam President. I just want to also just offer a couple of words and thoughts to Todd. I've known Todd now for the better part of, gosh, when I think back about it, over 20 years that Todd and I have worked together. Todd was, when I came into county government, he was on the Policy Board, he was really the longest-serving Chair of the Policy Board that I reported to. Todd and I disagreed on issues, we agreed on issues, but as many speakers have said tonight, Todd was, is famous for his ability to be able to disagree with someone, yet do it in a way that is, that is not disagreeable, and that allows you to be friends and even laugh about that disagreement, that disagreement later. I have so much respect for Todd. I've served under Todd as county administrator now for roughly 10 years. I consider Todd to be a great friend. I think that I would not be the person I am today and the administrator I am today for not, for the, for the guidance of Todd Portun as a person and as county commissioner. So I just want to offer to Todd, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the entire administration and the thousands of county employees, to say how much we appreciate all the work that he's done and the legacy that he will leave and everything that he touched here in Hamilton County. So thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, oh, Ted, yes. I'm sorry, I should have opened.
No, that's fine. I would like to say a few words. Words of St. Paul, I think, are very appropriate, Commissioner Demoss. I've worked with Todd Portun, I've known him for decades. When he was on council, we were, we'd talk on the phone about a number of issues, and we came, became friends. And as he worked on, as he became a Commissioner, we grew even closer. We worked on transportation issues. The guy was a fighter, he was a friend. He actually believed that there was a calling higher than just maybe what you would think is a call of the politics. And I, I've enjoyed working with him. I know Rusty Sherman, if he were here, you know, the attorney for the TID, he'd love to be here as well. But Todd, God bless you, our prayers are with you. Thank you for everything. I couldn't ask for a better Commissioner. He was an overtime Commissioner, and I know, and this isn't, I mean, you folks do a great job, you do, and I do mean that sincerely, but he was an overtime Commissioner. He wasn't afraid to call you at nine o'clock at night and say, hey, what about this? I think we might be able to do it this way. What do you think? And it was always, what do you think? And that's why you see people from across the political aisle saying this. They're not doing this because just to make a statement, they mean it. So, God bless you, Todd, and our prayers are with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to say anything? Yeah, go, Herschel.
So my name is Herschel Daniels, and I met Todd Portun as a member of the United Methodist Church, which we're both members of, about two decades ago when I came here. And Todd's legacy will live on because earlier this year, you as a county Commissioner led Todd and led this commission to say these words. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County do hereby honor the unbearable, unbeatable spirit and countless contributions of the generations of Americans of African slavery to the story of American greatness. In doing so, we salute Lydia Morgan, who has organized a grand year celebration of annual Greater Cincinnati's Juneteenth. And here's the part that is going to go down in the history, because it said, furthermore, all of you led by Todd Portun said, be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, do hereby today and every day recommit ourselves to defending the self-evident truth boldly declared by our founding fathers that all people are created equal. We as the leadership of the county recognize that although we may be created equal, that Americans of African heritage have faced a flawed citizenship since it was granted in 1868 with institutionalized and systematic racism by government and in the private sector. We are committed to addressing any legacy institutionalized and systematic racism by county government. This is a legacy of the life of Todd Portun and his faith in the church, his faith in God, and his faith in government to address systematic and institutional wrongs, and that not only in him as a Commissioner, but ongoing you as a Commission gave you charge to make this happen. to make this happen in the coming years. So, we so entered this in the United Nations. It has been entered into the Universal Periodic Review of the United States of America that will happen on May 20th, 2020 because our organization is in the United Nations and we so entered into. So, Todd's history is entered into this and your charge led by him. We look forward to working with you in that."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward?
I would.
Oh, hi, Robert.
Come down to my low level.
Robert Harris.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You know, I'm not going to stay long. I just wanted to say to Todd, as I've said to him in person, I say to him behind his back, and that is, I love you, man. You are my inspiration. You are my hero. And I just, when I grow up, I want to be just like you. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done, for all that you do. And to the rest of the commissioners, the other commissioners, y'all just keep on keeping on because you've been good to me. Thank you. Take care. God bless.
Roger, yeah, go ahead. Yep, yep.
Although I am here for other reasons tonight, the prosecutor's already given a statement, but I just wanted to say, I've been representing the county and the county commissioners for almost 44 years. I don't know how many commissioners I've actually represented, probably 17 or 18 over that time. I've represented every county officer in this county at one time or another. And although Todd and I have had philosophical differences, political differences, we have always been friends with each other. And there is no doubt in my mind that he was the most dedicated and still is the most dedicated county official who has ever held office here. Thanks.
Thank you, Roger. Diana Christie, the Director of MSD.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to really quickly add and speak to Todd for all of MSD, that those of us who are here today and those of us back at MSD, that we really do appreciate his service and his tireless effort on behalf of MSD and of course, the whole community at Metro Chief Mizzou District is clearly something that Todd has spent a lot of time on and cared very deeply about. And despite what those of you may hear, we are all really aligned in the same purpose and mission in what we do, and that is service to our community. And specifically at MSD, it's about ensuring, you know, safe and efficient treatment of our wastewater. And that's the most important thing for a thriving and healthy community. So, again, I just want to assure him that those of us at MSD will continue to work on the same issues that he cares about every day. We'll continue to work on solving our overflow problems and building a more resilient and sustainable utility for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes. Chip Gerhardt. Good evening.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I approached Todd in a different way than most people here. In 2000, I took a leave of absence from my job at Synergy to become the Executive Director of the Hamilton County Republican Party. And one of my jobs was to ensure that Todd Portune did not become a Hamilton County Commissioner. We see how that worked out.
Did not go well for you, but good for the rest of us.
It went well for the rest of the county. So, I'm here today, 19 years later, to say that Todd Portune has served this county more ably than maybe anybody else in the history of this county, Republican or Democrat. And given the challenges that he has faced over the years, that he has been here day in and day out, serving the citizens of Hamilton County, is a testament to the will and the power of that man. So, I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I'm glad I walked in when this was going in. And Todd, I hope you're watching right now. We love you. Thank you for your years of service to this county. And here we are today on the 19th of December, 2019, and we're better off because of your service. Thank you.
Thanks, Chip. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we will get back to our order of business and I need to make a motion to excuse Todd from the meeting.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is public comments and we've got a number of cards that are not associated with agenda items. The agenda items, I'm going to hold for a second. And so, generally, when you come to speak to the commission, we give you the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. There's a timer up on the podium and so, it'll let you know how you're doing. So, our first speaker is Dr. Vlasta Molak. Can you get through? Good evening.
Is Todd still watching?
I believe he is watching. I just got a text. I think he's watching.
Hi, Todd.
If not, we're going to have a video for him.
Okay. Hi, Todd. I've known him, I don't know, 30, 35 years, I don't know. You know, it feels like I've known him forever. Thank you, Todd. We disagreed, but that's all right. We disagreed in a very agreeable way. So, you're a great guy. Thank you. Now, this morning, I don't watch TV. I live off the grid. I'm doing an experimental living. And so, this morning, I get on my smartphone that my children forced on me from a friend in India. Hey, your president is impeached. It's all over the Indian newspapers. So, they apparently don't know that being impeached does not mean that you are removed from the office. So, they all think that Trump is gone. Anyway, then I got this message from my friend in Washington DC who's watching what's going on. So, she sent me these articles of impeachment. Says House of Representatives Resolution, impeaching Donald Trump, President of the United States for the following crimes and misdemeanors. One, we didn't win in 2016. Two, we can't win in 2020. Anyway, I'm an independent who had lived in Cincinnati since 1981 and I've never seen anything like this. I worked in US Congress for one of the presidential candidates and I'm sure he would agree that what's going on here is a charade and a circus and Americans are going to be very, very angry in 2020. So, we have similar deep state also on a local level, but I won't go into it because I don't have time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I think it's Bryce Phillips. Yes.
Good evening. I do public comment a lot, but this is a hard, hard day. I'm here because my heart is broken and trapped on the floor of this dirty, filthy, corrupt, inhumane dungeon known as the Hamilton County Justice Center where my friend, where a lot of people's friend died at the age of 25 years old. She was in jail for minor drug possession charges. She was an innocent person. She was a mother. She was someone who mattered, someone who should matter, but maybe, but I don't know that everyone is equal in this county. And, you know, I see this county, you know, can't seem to take a break from, you know, servicing some developer, some sports team, some new fancy mall, some rich people that want to make this into a playground to spend some damn money, time, and effort on people, the thousands of people in this county, our friends, our loved ones, our families who are dying from addiction, heroin. They can't get treatment. There is no treatment. You know how hard I tried? You know how hard she tried? She wanted to get better and there was no way to get better in this damned county. So, you know, I'm sorry for Todd Portune. I hope he gets better. Jessica was 25 years old and she should be alive and well and with us. She wanted to get better. She could have gotten better. It's not her fault. And, you know, God will curse those who did this to Jessica and, you know, we'll be talking to the Sheriff's Department, to Sheriff Neal, to the sheriffs that were on duty, to the jail staff, the medical staff who failed to provide help, but also to those who stand in the way of justice, to those who do not do what is necessary to fix these problems so that it doesn't happen again and again, over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bridget Hoskib. Am I right? I hope I'm close. Hoskins, sorry. Good evening.
Jessica's mom. She died on the 30th at the Justice Center. And as of today, I still have not been able to get much information as to what happened to my daughter. I've tried, talked to the county coroner. It was pretty much kind of shut down. Also, a detective down there had actually asked me what I wanted from him. I just need closure. I'd like to know what happened to my daughter. The newspaper, that lady that I talked to today had actually been able to get more information than I was, and I don't understand how that's possible. You know, I'm her mother. I'm her family and I want to know. I just feel like there needs to be some kind of something. I've, you know, from doing a little bit of research, I haven't had much time because all, I lost my best friend, you know? Something needs to be done. I was down there not too long myself and they aren't very, I know they're not supposed to be your friend while you're down there, but things need to change. You know, when somebody's calling out for help, I've had a couple of females that were in the Justice Center when my daughter was there, that said that several females had called out for help for my daughter and no one came. I want to find out why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we want to find out why too. We want to find out why too.
Got another speaker, Holly Meiser. We've got four speakers on this. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I am voice for Jessica Strope, for the death of Jessica. Jessica's life mattered to her family. She mattered to her friends. She mattered to her two young boys who are growing up without her. Jessica was valued and she was loved very much. And she showed her love to those around her. Despite the demons that she struggled with, she deserved the same amount of proper medical care that anyone in this room, in this very room, that anyone would expect for their loved one, if by chance, your loved one was in jail. You would demand proper medical care for your daughter, for your son, for your mom, for your dad, for your friend. You would expect proper medical care for them to come out alive and well, not to be on the floor deserted like a piece of trash. There needs to be some answers and there needs to be accountability for Jessica's death. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Belinda Warren.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Jessica Strope. I've been a family friend for many years and I know that Jessica was a very, very good person that struggled with some bad demons, but she mattered. And I know that it should not have been a death sentence for Jessica to enter the Justice Center and not come out. And as everyone said, there were many people that were calling out for help for Jessica that evening. And from what I understand, the cries for help went unanswered that evening and no one seems to be able to give any answers or accountability as to why Jessica was placed in medical specifically for, and no one can tell us whether or not she was going through withdrawal, whether or not she had gotten a hold of drugs while she was in there. No one has answers. It almost appears to be that there was an immediate cover-up. The death was still not determined, so we don't know anything. And it infuriates us as a group. It kills the family, the spirit of that because it makes it feel like she has no meaning, that she's just disposable because she had this horrible addiction. And there was something on the news, I think, where there were fallen guards. There were two names on the plaque. And I got to thinking when I saw this the other day, how many people, names would be on the plaque of the wrongful death of neglect of the guards that have been there? But anyway, somebody needs to answer for Jessica and what happened that night. We don't know. But thank you for allowing me to voice that.
Thank you. That is the final speaker on this and I, oh, I'm sorry, Brian. Okay. I want to express the sympathies of the Board for the loss of your daughter. And Brian, you can come on forward. I have contacted the Sheriff's Office and my understanding is that there is an ongoing investigation and I also understand that the coroner results are not in yet. And so, I'm more than happy my staff is in the room to follow up. I do want to also say that as a county commissioner, I know that we've done this work together as a Board. We are desperately trying to save lives and get people into treatment in this community. And so, I think we are so sorry for your loss and are trying desperately to do the work we can do to try to keep these kinds of things from happening. So, and I would love to follow up related to the accessibility of treatment and how people can access treatment in the community. So, I do want to say that. And Commissioner, just one second, Brian. Do you have any comments or questions?
I just agree with everything you've said and we're going to work very hard to find out what happened.
Thank you. Brian.
Yeah, and I think that's the crux of it all, to try to find out what happened because they started begging for help at 10:30 at night and they took her out at 6:30 in the morning, having not received any medical attention or any visits from any medical staff or COs. And sadly, this is not the first case of its type. There have been many cases of this type, people who I've known personally. Reverend McCracken's right-hand man was John Henry B. Kind Simmons and his son was there and he died while begging for medical help from an abscess on his leg which was caused by heroin. I want to commend you, Commissioner Dreehouse, and for being, putting so much effort into trying to stop the heroin epidemic, which I know that you have done. And this is a very sad situation for everyone involved, but it must be said that of all the places, a person should be safe when they're locked up in jail. There are COs, there are medical staff, and a person should not die while in custody and a person should not die from medical, from lack of medical treatment when they're in a medical facility. That's it.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you all for being here. And as you, you're welcome to stay, but if you choose not to, I'm going to have my staff follow you out as you exit. Thank you. Kevin Farmer is here. Kevin, you've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Hamilton County reliance on cash bail has perpetuated a two-tiered system of justice, one for the wealthy and one for the rest of us. The current system disproportionately pushes and target melanin-toned people as well as people from economically disadvantaged communities. There is no single effort into this issue. This is a collective effort. So, I want to give thanks and gratitude to Todd Portune for giving me his ear and his mind when it comes to tackling this issue, more or less the insight. So, my thing is, right now, since it's a large amount of people, sorry for the loss for the young lady, and definitely I want to... the young lady, and definitely I want to put it to the point that people need to know that the Ohio Supreme Court is putting a public comment that's ending on January 2nd when it comes down to Rule 46. Rule 46 deals with bail. So when it comes down to bail, they're trying to make some changes. And right now, there is public commenting, and if you want that information, you can go to the Ohio Supreme Court website to be able to get that information, or you can just holler at me before you leave out of here, and I can just shoot you the link and we can get it from there, right there. Because there, when it comes to issues like this and issues like this young lady's, nobody, when it comes to the community, we don't publicize things too well to let people know what's going on and what we can do about to make a significant change. I also stated that there will be, I guess, a bail project taking place in January. It was misled. They are going to be taking place in Hamilton County, they just don't know when yet. I was told by Joshua Mintz that the Public Defender's Office with Samantha Silverstein is taking aid to this with also other collective groups and organizations for this, starting in 2020. So I definitely want to get the word out and as much as possible, get a collective effort. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a number of other speakers' cards related to some public hearings. So our first public hearing is to consider the vacation of Fee Right-Away at Blue Rock Road. I don't know who is moving forward to give us an overview. Ted.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Welcome back.
Yes, we have a vacation of Blue Rock Road that has been presented to us. The vacation is located, if you're familiar with the north intersection of Cheviot and Blue Rock Road, there is, here's the relocated, or we have, is we have Blue Rock Road coming into Cheviot Road. There is a section of Blue Rock Road that is no longer needed because the intersection has been relocated, and it's working very well, by the way. I drive it myself a lot, and it has made a big, it has made a big improvement. And so we are in favor, you know, we support the vacation of the right-of-way, it is not needed for roadway purposes anymore. So therefore, we would recommend you move forward, but of course, you know, we need to go through the process.
Thank you. We've got a couple of speakers on this item. Brian is a doorman. Good evening. Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Good evening. I'm just here representing Whitehead Christian Church, just next door to that, and we're just in support, I'm here with Tom Abercrombie, we're just in support of everything moving forward. That's it.
Very good. Tom, you've also, okay, well, we've got two in support then. Is there anyone else here to speak to this issue? Okay, very good. This seems like a slam dunk to me, but so we will, I guess, close the hearing and ask for a resolution to come forward at our next meeting.
And we'll have, yeah, we'll have a resolution to you January 9th.
Thank you.
So proceed from there.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Our next hearing is related to an issue that we dealt with last week. Sorry?
Close the hearing.
Oh, I moved to close the hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So the second hearing was continued in progress from last week. This is a case in Green Township related to the Glenway McDonald's. It's related to a sign. Well, good evening. Are you going to give us a brief overview of the project?
Yes, if that's all right.
Just a reminder. Thank you.
My name's Sophia Hawley, and I'm pleased to be here as legal counsel for McDonald's Corporation. I'm here to protect the freestanding existing McDonald's arches located on Glenway. They are currently a legally non-conforming sign under the zoning ordinance, and the PUD application that's before the board currently does not change, modify, or have that sign change in any respect. As we submitted in our letters to the board, under Section 13-4.3, the sign is entitled to remain as a legally non-conforming use, and Section 18-3.3, which applies to PUDs, specifically says that the sign requirements of the zoning ordinance with respect to signs apply to PUDs, and we would submit to the board that the PUD does permit the legal non-conforming use. Something that Mr. Tepe, the attorney I work with, brought up during the last meeting is that zoning ordinances are strictly construed in favor of the property owner, and that's the direction of the Ohio Supreme Court. And as a result, if there is confusion, if it could go one way or the other, it should be construed in favor of the property owner. And so with respect to the argument that the existing non-conforming use is somehow not permitted under the PUD, I would argue that, first of all, that is contrary to the zoning ordinance. But if you say even that it's not entirely clear, that ambiguity should be interpreted in favor of the property owner, McDonald's Corporation, here. We would request that the board remove the condition with, of the PUD, that the zone, that the sign be modified to comply with the zoning resolution. We believe that it already is compliant with the zoning resolution, and we would request that the commission direct that that be removed. And as a final point, for my client's rights, I will make a statement for the record that if your determination is against McDonald's Corporation, which I submit to you it should not be, that we preserve our right to appeal, and that we would appeal that to the Hamilton County Court of Common Pleas, and I say that simply for the record.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I do not, and I'm wondering if there's someone here from the administration that would like to comment as well. Is Brian here? I couldn't see you. Brian, you're behind the pole. Good evening.
Brian Snyder, Hamilton County Zoning Administrator. The issue with the supposed conflict in the zoning resolution, the section that they were referring to in the non-conforming use chapter, Section 13-4.3, is under the Section 13-4, which refers to zoning certificates and permits. That section basically allows for non-conforming signs to get permits for face changes only, and then lays out the provisions when the zoning inspector can require the sign to be removed. And those are only allowed in certain instances. So me, personally, as a zoning inspector, I cannot go out and make them remove their sign. That's not what's happened in this case. The section that they refer to in Chapter 18 of the zoning resolution says the specific requirements in this resolution for signs shall apply to all planned unit developments. That's the gist of it, there's more to that section. But the specific requirements in this resolution for signs shall apply to all planned unit developments. The section that they're referring to, the non-conforming signs section under zoning certificates, in my interpretation as the zoning inspector, is not a specific requirement, it's an exemption from the requirements of the sign chapter. It's not listed, that section is not listed under the general standards for signs, which is the next section, 13-5. And therefore, it's my interpretation, again, as the zoning inspector, for the record, that the specific requirements in this resolution do not include the non-conforming and non-compliant signs section, because that section is not a specific requirement related to signs, it's an exemption from the requirements for signs, and it's listed under the zoning certificate and permits section of the zoning code. As far as the case itself, the appeal that is before you, again, as I stated last week, you have the authority to uphold the recommendation of the zoning commission, which included the condition that's at question here, requiring the sign to be modified to comply with the zoning code. You have the ability to make some kind of modification of that request, and you have the ability to grant the appeal and remove that condition from the zoning commission's approval. So it's at your discretion to decide which way you want to go. I believe that there was a request that we contact the township, because the township had recommended against the sign. I did reach out to Adam Getzman, Development Director for Green Township, and he did ask the township trustees if they had changed their opinion, and he sent me an email today that said the trustees have not indicated a new stance on the McDonald's sign, their initial support for the redevelopment of the site. They recommended the freestanding sign on the property be brought into compliance with the minimum applicable standards of the zoning resolution. So that is still the position of the township as far as the sign goes.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions or comments?
No, I've listened to what our staff has said, and I'm ready to vote on that.
Okay, thank you. I also reached out to Tony Rosiella, who is a trustee in Green Township, just to get some clarity as to what had happened at the local level, and he, too, reiterated that they feel strongly about their position on this and would recommend that we take the administration's recommendation and deny the appeal, in understanding that if we were to vote to deny the appeal, that there is another step in the process to the Court of Common Pleas.
Yes.
So I am going to take the recommendation, and so we'll make a motion to approve of the resolution on the appeal of the administrative action of the Hamilton County Rural Zoning Commission for Case Green 2019-08 Glenway McDonald's PUD. And this, the resolution I'm reading is the denial of the appeal, for the record.
And it goes to the now-therefore-bea resolved clause is where you'll find.
Yes.
The terms of the administrative action of the rural zoning.
That's right.
And you'll close the public hearing as well.
Yes, that's right. So I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I will also move to close the hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. All right. We've got a number of by leave items. Administrator Aludo, I have speakers' cards on two of them, so I would like to get those in front of us first. One is related to FC, and the other one is related to the SBU program. So let's do FC first.
Thank you, commissioners. So in front of you, I do have multiple by leave items this evening. We've been through most of these on Tuesday. There are a few new ones, but they're, first of all, I want to make sure that the commissioners have this, and I believe the clerk had passed this out in advance of the meeting, so I just want to make sure everyone has all the by leaves, including the one on FC. The first of the by leaves in front of you is a resolution authorizing negotiation of development agreement with FC Cincinnati regarding community public parking facilities. As the board is well aware, back in March of 2018, the board authorized the development of a plan to support the installation of parking capacity for award of an MLS franchise to FC Cincinnati. The board did so with the understanding that the parking capacity would not only support team operations and the fans that attend FC Cincinnati games from all corners of the county, but that the parking capacity would also support and facilitate economic development and community growth in the urban core. Since that time, the county has been in discussions with FC Cincinnati over the terms under which this parking capacity would be put into place. I would just like to indicate that there were really four primary goals that the county had as we entered into discussions on this with the team. And first was that the capacity, the parking capacity be put into place into the community in a way that supported community growth, community development and economic growth in the community. Second, that FC Cincinnati be a substantive partner in the development of that facility. Third, that there were cost protections for the county, and especially as it relates to the operational costs of the facility. And fourth, that any sort of revenue sharing that was done in the agreement done, would be done in a way that incentivizes the development of commercial retail and office economic development in the vicinity surrounding the stadium. I believe that the resolution in front of you, which authorizes the formation of, or the negotiation, an agreement of a development agreement, hits on all of those points. I'm happy to go through it in more detail, but the terms are here in front of you. Commissioner Dreehouse, Madam President, I'll defer to you if you would like me to go through it in more detail, but I know there's public comment, et cetera, so I don't want to take up too much time. But I did want to offer this for you this evening for your approval.
Thank you. And I just want to say right off the bat, thank you for your work on this. We have been working on this for over a year, ever since we passed the resolution. And I want to remind everyone, the resolution that we passed before your time, Commissioner Dumas, was to provide 1,000 parking spots for game days within the vicinity of the stadium, make sure that those parking facilities had a community benefit, and the team was to provide us with a pad-ready site. Those were the three things that were encapsulated in the resolution. And so I, in many discussions with residents both of the West End, the community councils of the West End, and the area near Findlay Market, came to the conclusion that we could provide for parking for FC within the vicinity of the stadium with two different parking facilities, and we went down that road pretty early on. There's also a financial benefit to doing it that way. And so this resolution talks about the conclusion of all of that, where the majority of the parking spaces are what I call on the campus of the stadium site, so they're north of the stadium, but we are also going to pick up the remainder of those spots over at a smaller facility near the Findlay Market. There's a lot going on at Findlay Market. They are clamoring for a parking facility because of all of the activity there, current and expected in the future with some added development. The vendors that are there and the residents have all contacted my office many times to talk about their desire for this garage, but we also recognize that we needed to put something nearer to the stadium. And I also heard from the West End Community Council and residents of the West End talking about their concerns about not having a parking lot and having a lot of congestion if we weren't to do it near the stadium. So I think that this resolution is a nice combination of those two things, and I think it accomplishes the goals of trying to provide game day parking, but also making sure that the community benefit is real and year-round at both of these parking facilities. The revenue split guarantees that we do not go underwater by way of the operations of the garage, and so I think that is an important element here. This was part of the negotiation back and forth, but we wanted to be very careful that if there were to be any kind of operating loss by way of these facilities, that FC would be helpful when it came to paying for that, maybe in the beginning years before the development, particularly in the West End, comes online. So I appreciate the work of both FCC and the administration to get us to where we are today. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, Madam President. Having been involved in some of the negotiation, my concern was to make sure that Hamilton County was protected in this process and this agreement, and also that the West End residents were also included in this process. So having seen that happen, I'm ready to vote in favor of this.
Great, thank you. Jeff, is there anything that we missed here?
No, I think between the initial comments and the comments of the commissioners, we've covered most everything.
Very good. We do have one speaker's card related to this item. I'm looking for Jeff. Jeff Capel? Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes? Welcome.
Yeah, though, I'm here to talk about that issue. I first just want to say I do appreciate all the service that Todd Portune has given this community for many decades. Even when we disagreed, he was always civil and polite to me, and that's even before there was a more decaf version of myself, starting about 10 years ago. Now, on this issue, unfortunately, this is just the culmination of two years of mismanaging this issue. I've been before you numerous times over the past two years to say, don't move forward with something like this until you get a signed legal agreement from FC Cincinnati that guarantees they will pay the county property taxes that they should be paying on a $250 million facility. And, you know, I've been told several times that, yeah, we're working on it, we'll do it, but it was clear that that was never going to happen and that you never wanted it to happen. It is just unconscionable that we would be giving a 0% tax rate to FC Cincinnati on a $250 million facility and spending $27 million on a parking garage at the same time the rest of us get a nice tax increase to help pay for all this. Since you haven't passed it yet, it's not too late to take a step back and try to get this right. It would simply be unconscionable if this became a county where the greed of a small number of billionaires took priority over the welfare of over 800,000 citizens.
Thank you for your comments. I will share with you that having reached out, and my staff reached out to Commissioner Portune regarding this issue, you do disagree, again, with Commissioner Portune, with all due respect, because he was the one that kind of started us down this road with the negotiations. He was the president of the commission when this all started, and Todd is, if he were here, would tell you that he's supportive of the resolution. A couple of things I want to hit on, and you mentioned them. I don't want any confusion around how this is being paid for. These are parking revenues that are being used from the Parking Enterprise Fund to pay for parking garages, and it's a restricted use. This is the, one of the few uses available to us. These are not general funds. This is unrelated to the general fund and to the sales tax. So I just want to be very clear on that point. This also is a project where the team is paying for the stadium and is paying for the property on which we are building the parking garage. So there are some, I think, important distinctions here, and I think we are trying to ag- So there are some, I think, important distinctions here, and I think we are trying to acknowledge that FC has, in partnership with the county, provided something here so that we can move forward with the two facilities. So with that, I am going to offer that we approve of the resolution authorizing negotiation of a development agreement with FC Cincinnati regarding community public parking facilities.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summar, do you mind?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item we have is speaker's card is the SBU program, which is related to the MSD items that we have in front of us. There are three items. So Jeff, why don't you give us an overview of those, and then I will peel out the speaker's card when appropriate.
Thank you. Madam President, so you're just asking for an overview of the, of all three, of the MSD?
Yes.
Of the MSD budget items, or?
Yes. The rate issue, the CIP and the operating budget.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. So the first item in front of you is a resolution approving and adopting the MSD 2020 through 2020 Capital Improvement Program for Metropolitan Sewer District of Greater Cincinnati. This is the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners' modified version under the 1968 agreement, which set in place the governance structure for MSD. The Board of County Commissioners, MSD, the city of Cincinnati, is required to submit a CIP to the Board. The Board of County Commissioners is empowered with the authority to adopt or to modify and adopt that CIP. This is a modified version of the CIP. It contains $51.9 million worth of wet weather improvement program funds, $60.2 million of asset management program and programming, and $16.5 million of allowance funding. So that is the, that is the CIP. I don't know if you want to take these one at a time, or if you want me to?
Let's go to the operating, then I am going to call the speaker forward.
Okay. The operating budget in front of you is a resolution approving and adopting the MSD 2020 Operating Budget with modifications and conditions directing MSD to adhere to, complete the contained directives. This is an operating budget which differs a bit from what MSD had submitted. It is an operating budget at a level of $217.7 million. And we have staff here who can go into more detail on this if there are any questions. We've obviously had several public hearings on the matter, and there's been substantive discussion on this over the past two weeks, but we do have staff here if there are additional questions. The third item that you referenced is actually related to the rate. And as we've indicated in our prior staff meetings, the administration is recommending a zero rate increase this year or a flat rate, so there is no resolution directing that specifically this year. But I just want, again, for the record, to acknowledge that the Board is affirmatively keeping rates flat for 2020.
Thank you. If, with your deference, I'm going to go to the speaker. Robin Harrison is here to speak to this item. Good evening. Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes?
Good evening to all of you, and thank you for paying attention to our concerns at Communities United for Action. I briefly heard what you were just discussing, and I'm just reviewing that and would like to have a copy of what the voting will be on. That's why I'm here present tonight. Mr. Todd Portune, sorry you're not here. I didn't see you on Tuesday, too. I've only known Todd for a couple of years, being involved with the concerns of COFA. And you are a great man, and you are very considerate of everyone's ideas in life, and we will miss you. Okay. Now, basically, like I said, we were here Tuesday night, and I'd like to follow up with the recommendations that we provided you on Tuesday's meeting. I briefly heard you discussing them. Get a copy of that information if at all possible. I am very grateful that you did take into consideration and still allocate the plan for the Ludlow Run Watershed Project, and also just now I heard the rate increase, that there would be no rate, following up with the, making plans to make sewers affordable for everyone, including the CAPA program. Now, the additional items we had asked for was to add the budget line for an independent audit of how the sewer backup response and prevention programs comply in regards to, with the consent decree. The second one was the doubling the sewer backup program's budget to 20 million to ensure there is enough money to help all victims that are experiencing sewer overflows, a budget for contingency to purchase the homes of individuals, particularly in Muddy Creek, which have been waiting patiently for three years in case a federal emergency managed money is not issued, and then anticipate additional $1 million decrease in revenue to immediately expand the customer assistance program, not only for the 65-year-old individuals that qualify with the monies associated with that, but also to those who are renters and have that bill in their name, and individuals who may be experiencing a time where, you know, bad times, where they don't have money or the job to pay it, include them in it, and also for those who are handicapped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to address, this is the second time this issue regarding renters has come up within the last couple of hearings. We, under Ohio law, are not able to provide that relief for renters. However, there has been some movement with Senator Cecil Thomas to ask him to provide legislation for not only expansion to renters, but there were a couple of different other categories that are being considered. So I just want to kind of correct the record on that. We have done what we can by way of providing relief for seniors that qualify for the home set exemption, and I believe we are all collectively working on the legislation through Senator Thomas. So I just want to offer some clarification on that. But thank you for your comments. So as was stated, we are, thank you, we are recommending a zero increase this year to rates. We have not had an increase in rates since I've been here. I know it's been a couple, a few years, primarily because we have still some uncertainty related to the structure of MSD, and we're still trying to work that out in Judge Barrett's courtroom. And we also have a study about the impervious surfaces that's going on that I expect will help provide some relief as well. So I don't feel like it's a very prudent time to have a rate increase. And I just do want to say that there's always this overview for MSD that's related to balance. And so it's this balancing act between providing relief programs and not raising rates, and there's always this tug and pull. And so I feel like that also with some of the budgets that are in front of us, particularly the CIP, which is a combination of asset management, which is important to an aging system, new, Phase 2A projects that respond to the consent decree, and the SBU program, which is also critically important to the neighborhood. And on that point, we have allocated the same that we did last year. If we need to go above that, if we have weather events that dictate that, then we will do it, as we always have. So I just do want to assure you of that. But the expectation is, or I guess the hope is, that the amount allocated during this budget process will be enough to cover us. And if it's not, it's not, and MSD will come forward with a different budget allocation next year during the year, and we have the ability to do that and make that kind of adjustment. So I am ready to vote on the county's adjusted CIP.
And Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, if I, just by way of clarification, and as you indicated, this is a, the county modified CIP, but, and while our colleagues at MSD, I think, understand that, I wanted to see if I could call upon Mr. Renekamp, just to, from a process perspective, talk about, there are very, there are several resolutions that are within the CIP document, because in approving this, you're authorizing planning and design for certain projects, also authorizing construction for others. And while our CIP differs from MSD's, I thought I just might be, and thanks to Clerk Panietto for clarifying this, that we typically take this time to explain to the Board those different resolutions that are a part of the CIP. So Jack, if you wouldn't mind just walking through from a process perspective what the Board is approving by approving a CIP in the way of planning, design, and construction?
Of course. Jack Renekimp with the Metropolitan Sewer District. In the previous CIPs and consistently over the last 50-plus years of the district's existence, what the Board typically has done is, there are multiple aspects of a CIP package that the Board undertakes through, in its legislative approval, one of which is approving the CIP generically. The other is approving when plans are, and specifications are needed to be designed, it's approving, allowing MSD to prepare those plans and design specifications, eventually to bring back to the Board at a future state for construction of projects. And for certain projects that are part of an allowance that has been incorporated into MSD CIP since 2010, to approve the construction funding and activities of those allowances. In particular, these go to maintenance of the treatment and collection system for necessary and ongoing particular repairs and improvements. They're not brought forward as separate projects individually, but as allowances within the CIP. And that legislative package allows MSD to put them out to bid, to receive bids, and then to award contracts. So in a nutshell, that's the process that is incorporated within the CIP, so your actions are taken across a variety of legislative types and requirements that's necessary for individual projects to go forward.
Thank you.
Jeff, is that?
Yes, thank you. So there are, there are several resolutions in the packet, and I think historically, we've approved these generically as a, as a package. I don't know, so I don't think we've read through each and every one, but I just, again, wanted to make sure.
I just wanted to make sure that it was.
No, it's, I'm glad you did, because it is, I just want to make sure people understand as we're passing the CIP what it is. In fact, we're passing what we're authorizing and directing MSD to do as it relates to planning, design, and advancing construction of certain projects.
Okay. So, before we get to the voting, questions or comments?
I have no questions.
Okay. So Jeff, I, the resolution I have on top is the resolution approving and adopting the MSD 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program for the Metropolitan Sewer District of Greater Cincinnati, Hamilton County, Ohio, as modified by the Board of County Commissioners and conditions and directives to MSD, and appropriating funds therefore. And then it goes on to the whereas clauses and the now therefore clause, so.
Correct.
Second.
All right. I'm going to make the motion to approve of this resolution.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other resolutions we need to do related to the CIP?
The operating.
Okay. All right. So on to the operating budget. We have, and I, we have had a couple of hearings to dig in a little bit on both the CIP, the operating budget, and the rate increase, and so I do want to provide that context. So we've got a resolution in front of us that allows for an increase of, I believe it's 3.5, to the operating budget of MSD for a total operating budget of 217.7. Are there any questions or comments related to this motion?
I'm in agreement with this resolution, and I'm still waiting for information. As I've received a lot of information from MSD, and I appreciate that, but I think our quarterly reviews that we incorporated in this resolution will help me to better understand how the money is being allocated, so I'm not willing to go any higher than that.
Okay. And adjustments can be made also on this one. So I will move then that we approve of the resolution approving and adopting the MSD 2020 Operating Budget with modifications and conditions and directing MSD to adhere to complete the contained directives. And again, this is the one, there are a couple here in front of us, so this is the one with the total operating budget of 217.7.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. All right. Jeff?
I will continue on with the, with the by leaves. The next by leave relates to the, is Resolution Number 54 in your, in your packet, and this relates to establishing a $1 billion, $1 billion in appropriations to defray public expenses for the County of Hamilton, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020. This is what is collectively known as the appropriation of the all-funds budget. Again, we've discussed this over the past several staff meetings as well. This includes 276.9 million, a general fund budget, and a 761.3 million restricted funds budget as well. We provided the Board with information on this over the, over the past week or so, answered several questions, and recommend approval at this point of the Board. Happy to answer any questions as well. Budget Director Brugan is also here if there are any questions on the all-funds budget.
Are any questions or comments?
Madam President, I've reviewed it, and I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and we've discussed this budget before as well. So I'm going to move that we approve of Resolution Number 54.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff, before we go forward, there, I think there are people in the audience that have arrived that were not here when we were, had public comment related to Commissioner Portune. Is there anybody at this time that would like to come forward and make any comments related to Todd? No? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, but I just did. Now you, now you are on the spot. I saw you walk in. I know you had expressed some interest in saying something, so I wanted to give you the opportunity not to put you on the spot.
So, on behalf of the children of Hamilton County and all the children that we serve at Cincinnati Children's Hospital, and all of the work that Commissioner Portune has done with Cradle Cincinnati and infant mortality and countless other children's issues, he has been a fantastic champion for children, and we so appreciate it. He has supported every health and hospital levy. He has supported children's services levies, and children have always been front and center in his, in his public service, both at City Council and here. And so on behalf of Cincinnati Children's Hospital, our CEO, Michael Fisher, and all the children of Hamilton County, we are eternally grateful for Todd and everything that he has done, and he always put kids first.
Thank you. Melissa Saldonas, just, yeah, thank you. Thank you. This is the most unorthodox meeting I've ever run, so, so we're just going to fly. All right. So Jeff, please, carry on.
The next by leave resolution in your packet is the, is Budget Adjustment Number 45. This is $528,899. This is primarily related to the appropriation of funds for various grant programs related to alternative release options for offenders in the justice system, as well as there are dollars in here appropriating primarily transfers for end-of-the-year payroll. The vast majority, there's a transfers within the budget, not reappropriation. There's one department in the stadium, the stadiums, stadiums, stadium operations where there's actually a reappropriation. We probably could have done a transfer there if we had wanted to, but we were safe and just, and just reappropriated the dollars. But this is, again, $528,899 for grants and end-of-the-year payroll adjustments to ensure we can make payroll as we hit the end of the year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
No questions.
Thank you. I'll move that we approve of Budget Adjustment Number 45.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is Budget Adjustment Number 46. This relates to the transfer of bond proceeds into a fund and appropriation of those dollars so that we can begin, the Board approved earlier on this year, the acquisition of property interest in the Hilltop property. This allows us to complete the first phase of that, as in the Board's resolution earlier this year. It prescribed an early January closing date, so we want to make sure we have those dollars available when we go to close on that property. I just want to be clear, I don't know that I was entirely clear on Tuesday, that as these bond proceeds are transferred, the debt service for this will be getting, will be, will start to be paid out of the stadium sales tax fund as opposed to the general fund or any other fund of the county, once we transfer the bond proceeds in this manner. So the administration recommends approval, can answer any questions if you need that.
Are there any questions?
No questions. No questions.
I'm going to move that we approve of Budget Adjustment Number 46.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next is Resolution Number 53. This is authorizing the county administrator to execute a $939,000 contract with SPCA of Cincinnati to provide dog warden services. This is a six-month extension into 2020 to allow us to begin the process of completing the transition of dog warden services underneath the county. As we've, as we indicated on Tuesday, that the agreement allows us to transition those services separately, both enforcement and patrol services, as well as kenneling services at different times. I do want to acknowledge that Budget Director Brugan met for the first time today with an advisory committee on this issue, and that advisory committee vetted and concurred with the recommendation to advance transition of the enforcement and patrol services to, underneath the sheriff's office. So we'll, we'll be bringing that back to the board as a separate item early on in 2020, but this allows us with an extension with the SPCA to begin that process. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's awesome. That's why--
Very good. That's a good comment. All right. I'm going to move that we approve of Resolution Number 53.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is just in your packet as a resolution. It's not with a specific number, but is a resolution approving a water contract between the Board of County Commissioners and the Village of Wyoming for 30 years, from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2050, subject to the attached contract. We went through this on Tuesday in staff meeting. Again, this is a 30-year agreement, includes a 1.25 multiplier, which is consistent with most of our other water contracts in the county. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions or comments?
No questions.
I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution approving water contract between Board of County Commissioners and Village of Wyoming for 30 years, from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2050, subject to the attached contract.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next in your packet as well does not have a separate number, but this is a resolution authorizing the county administrator into, into an agreement regarding construction and operation of a music venue at the Banks Development with CSO, MEMI, and the Cincinnati Bengals. This is essentially an operating agreement as we move forward and work with the City of Cincinnati on a venue development agreement that contains all of these parties. This is a specific agreement between the county, CSO, MEMI, and the Bengals relating, that sets forth and details the operating relationship between the county as it relates to its lease with the Cincinnati Bengals, and the operating agreement between the Bengals and MEMI specifically as it relates to construction of the facility, and the, in a relationship and of, on an operational basis between the team and the, and MEMI, especially as it relates to game day interactions between the Bengals, their patrons, and the music venues. So the administration recommends approval, and only offers as well that this is an agreement that fits into the context of other agreements that are being developed along, to correspond with this, including the venue development agreement with the City of Cincinnati that I mentioned earlier.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment in order to move forward. We can't stop it in the middle. I wouldn't want to do that, but I did vote against the music venue, but I know we're moving forward, and we need to continue to do that, so.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm going to move to approve of the resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement regarding construction and operation of a music venue at the Banks Development with CSO, MEMI, and the Cincinnati Bengals.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I believe the final byleave item I have tonight is Resolution Number P-134-19. This is authorizing the award of RFP 039-19 and the execution of an agreement between Amoresco Inc. and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of county facilities for energy efficiency and conservation measures. This as we get into our capital improvement planning and addressing a lot of our deferred maintenance challenges in 2020. This is the continuation of some really good energy conservation work that we've done in our county facilities over the past 10 to 15 years. This will allow us to begin doing energy audits in many of our county facilities so that we can start planning different energy conservation projects, which will also, which will be an inclusive part of our broader capital improvement plan. The dollar value of this is $150,000 for that planning and scoping work. Again, as I mentioned in staff meeting on Tuesday, we will only be paying that amount if we choose not to move forward with the actual work, in which case the $150,000 will be folded into the broader financing package for the energy conservation improvements. So this is a program that served the county well in the past. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions or comments?
No questions.
I'm going to move that we approve of the Resolution Number P-134-19, authorizing the award of RFP 039-19 and execution of an agreement between Amoresco Inc. and the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of county facilities for energy efficiency and conservation measures.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
I know you've got one more.
And as I am talking about our capital improvement plan, thank you, Budget Director Brugan.
Everyone, everyone is panicked in this room right now.
Yes, yes.
This is a big one.
So, yeah, so you also have a Resolution Number 51, adopting the 2020 Capital Improvement Plan for the, for the county. So again, as we mentioned on Tuesday, a separate, as opposed to the MSD Capital Improvement Plan, when the board passes a CIP for the county, we're really just passing a plan. This is not authorizing anything at this point in order for us to move forward on any of these projects. We will scope that, come back to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation on it, but this does, in fact, just approve the plan, the CIP for the county for 2020. Again, we will do work in the first quarter of 2020, scoping out a plan and some of the most priority projects for the county, and bring that back to the board in a broader document in early 2020. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions or comments?
No.
All right. I'm going to move that we approve of Resolution Number 51.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that would conclude my byleaves. And I do, just, again, I want to thank the Commissioners for what was a very exciting year in county government this year. I want to thank all three Commissioners, President Dreyhouse, Vice President Sumaro Dumus, and of course Commissioner Portune for all their help and support over the year, and on behalf of all of the county employees, in particular, the employees under the Board of County Commissioners. Wish everyone a happy holiday as we move forward into, and conclude the holiday season. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We are moving to comments and motions of the county commissioners. Vice President Sumaro Dumus?
I will defer my comments. I've already made them as it relates to Todd, so that was the main thing I wanted to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have one thing. I want to remind people that the application process for the Commission on Women and Girls is, is open, and will go through the month of December into early January. So if anyone is or knows of a woman or girl that would like to participate on the commission, please go to the county website. You will find the boards there, and you will find the application there. The application has been modified this year to make it a little bit easier for the girls, so not, they're not intimidated when they look at that application. So please encourage folks that you know to do that. We are looking forward to another robust set of recommendations next year from the commission. We've done our public hearings. We'll move into the regular agenda. MSD has item number one. This is a high-rate treatment facility diversion structure. Jack Renekamp is here to describe the program.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Before I begin speaking to you and also speaking to Commissioner Portune, I want to thank him for his service. I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to serve as MSD's legislative representative to the board since 2002, almost the entire time that Mr. Portune was county commissioner, and it was a pleasure to work with him and to provide information about MSD's operations and to be his friend.
Thank you, Jack.
This particular item is a request to the board to appropriate $26.8 million in construction funding for the Mill Creek wastewater treatment, high-rate treatment facility, treatment plant, high-rate treatment facility diversion structure. This project is being built as a progressive design build. We can certainly brief the board on some of the more finer details of that particular process. Needless to say, the, the Ohio Legislature authorized design-build projects for counties in 2011, which basically permits certain types of projects, should they be, go down that pathway, to potentially be of cheaper cost and a faster completion time from start to finish, under one umbrella called design-build, rather than a, a design-build and, bid-and-build process. This particular request advances the initial phase of this project in, in anticipation of a future wet weather facility at the Mill Creek wastewater treatment plant. The project constructs a diversion structure as well as connections to the existing Mill Creek interceptors. It's both the interceptor and the auxiliary interceptors, which are the main trunk sewers that run throughout the county, north-south throughout the county. And the request, as I indicated, is to appropriate funds to build this project, complete the construction. Happy to entertain any questions. Also with me is Ryan Welsh, who can speak more specifically to any engineering or design questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. I think we are familiar with the process or program, so thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay. I'm going to move that we approve of item number one on our regular agenda.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Ted? There are no regular items for you, but I see you sitting there.
Well, there may be questions about one item.
Oh, all right, all right. It's so unusual for me not to call on you right now, but I'm not going to do it, resisting the urge. All right. So we've got a multitude of consent agenda items here. We are polling number 12. It's related to one of the boards and commissions, and I think the rest of it--
18 as well, pulling 18.
I thought we were not pulling 18.
No.
We are pulling 18.
Yeah.
Okay. So are there any questions or comments related to any of the consent agenda items?
Well, I'm just really excited about the boards and commissions and people are putting in to be a part of the process, and that's what we need, more people to do. We're filling a lot of vacancies, and we'll fill more in 2020, so I'm excited about that.
I want to echo those comments, I too, and thank these people for their service. All right. So if there are no further comments or questions, I'm going to move to approve of consent agenda items 2 through 11, 13 through 17, and 19 through 31.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further on my agenda. Is there anything other than to wish everyone a happy holiday? Thank you all for your service to this county. We are better for it, and thank you for being here this evening.
And I also wanted to do the same. Everybody have a happy holiday and a prosperous new year. I'm looking, I'm about two weeks short of my year, and I'm really excited about it. I want to thank staff for helping me, showing me through the process, especially Jeff, who's been really answering a whole bunch of questions with me, and, and also my colleagues, and so, and the ladies at the DS. So thank you very much for all your help, encouragement, and I'm anxiously looking forward to 2020.
And happy holidays to Todd, who is probably still watching, so.
Yes.
With that, I'm going to move to adjourn.
Second.
Yes. Thank you.
Second. I said second. Yes.
Okay.